You gotta get out if I tell you next round of council's gonna get rid of those. Told you my daughter should get your deal. Get us a deal.
Okay, because of the length of the agenda, I guess we'll customers and they'll be here. We'd like to call this regular meeting of council to order. First item on our agenda is a public input period. If there's anyone that wishes to address council with a matter of immediate concern, please come forward. But I want to say at this time, if this has anything to do with the annual report, you will get a chance to speak then. So this is just public input period. So if there is anyone, please come forward, state your name.
Hi, I'm Dale Pagan. I'm here with Career Development Services, Karen Huedon. We're here to ask for council support and financial assistance with our fundraiser that we're putting on September 12th. It's called Coins for Change. I've got some brochures here. Basically, what we're doing is we're hosting a sleep under the bridge on September 12th from 8:00 PM until 8:00 AM. We're asking people to pledge each hour that they stay under the bridge. All proceeds for the program or for the night under the bridge are going to go towards our Getting to Home Homelessness project. The project is a joint initiative between the Steel Center and Career Development Services. To date, the program has assisted 173 individuals in the Greater Trail area. That includes Roslin, Warfield, you know, the Greater Trail area. The program has assisted these individuals, over half of them, find housing. Those individuals range in age from young people just transitioning into adulthood and seniors who just are having financial trouble and can't seem to sustain their housing. So the project itself initially was started and we had some funding through HRSCC, the federal government. After that funding decided, we were able to secure funds from other sources. And we're now, of course, coming into our third year and again, trying to find funding. So what we're doing is we're hosting this fundraising event in hopes that we can, A, bring awareness to the issue and B, of course, raise funds for, so we can sustain ourselves another year. So.
Thank you. And I'm sure you're aware this is coming up in our agenda and council has all that information already.
Yes. So we were told to come at the public input.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that you knew that this was on the agenda.
So we just thought we'd add a little bit extra to let you guys know that we're just hoping that we can, we have presented at the various councils in the Greater Trail area and have some support already. And we're hoping that we can rely on this council for support.
Great.
Is there any questions?
We don't do questions of public input. Thank you. But there will be a lot of discussion when it comes up in the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
I heard this is the only time I get to speak, but I have a variance application on, it's 8C, I need to build a garage with a suite above. And I'm asking for a 1.15 meter height variance. I just want you to know that I talked to the one neighbor that would affect and she's totally not, she doesn't mind at all. She's the one who'd get the most shade and be affected. Otherwise, it's just the lane. There's nobody affected. And I've reworked the plans about three times to get it down into, all the setbacks are according to the bylaws exactly. It's just this one little piece that I really need. So I guess I'll tell you that.
The map shows because this is also in the, same thing, this is also in the agenda.
Well, I just wanted you to know that I'd already talked to the one neighbor too. Like that wouldn't probably show.
We appreciate that.
And she was totally fine.
Great, thank you, true. Mr. Thompson.
I just want to.
Then Mr. Frye.
Sorry, I just wanted to let council know that I'm here to address any questions you might have during deliberations about snowmaking as well as I'm the chair of the Lower Communitative Corporation. And if there's any questions about that during your conversations, I'm here for that as well.
Mr. Thompson, thank you. Mr. Frye.
I'm here to.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Zanuzzi, sorry. He's something, no, he's outside. Sorry, Brian.
Yeah.
Sorry, Brian.
I'm just here to take a few minutes to address some opposing remarks regarding our request for a variance to our two-car detached garage versus a one-car detached garage. Our two-car garage detached garage will be, will respect the natural surroundings and maintain a high standard of development in the area. Proposed structure will have a low profile as not to impede the safety of drivers on the street from either direction. The height of the garage will be at the level of our lowest deck, eight or nine feet from the road per height and will be platted in pretty much the same stuff that Robert Fels platted his house in, or his garage in, sorry. There's a lot of other detached garages in the area. They're all of different styles and so it's really hard to say that there's a typical detached garage plan for the area. So whatever guidelines there is, I'm not sure what they are. But the natural lay of our lot is limiting us to where we can put that because of the, there's a right-of-way down the one side of the lot. So that's, we always planned on putting it in front because that's the only place we could do it. Every site is site-specific, so that's why we have variance to deal with this kind of stuff, as you well know. The proposed building will not detract from the natural value of the surrounding homes and rather it will add to the deck value. Building this garage is going to actually improve because as you know, we collect a lot of things like cars and all our toys. So putting them in a garage will look a lot better than having them lay all over the streets as Robert Fels tells me every day he drives by. So I think that's all I've got to say. I just want to say that it's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Zanuzzi. My apologies. Anyone else that wishes to address council public input period? I asked for last time, anyone else that wishes to address council public input period? Thank you very much. I, motion that council receive the annual report. And first of all, is there a mover to that? Moved by Moore, seconded by Thatcher. Is there anyone that wishes to address, in the public that wishes to address the annual report? Please come forward, state your name. Thank you. Please.
I'm Laura Pedditt.
Have a seat, if you wish.
Well, it's not a long deal, but thank you. I had a little gather through the report and a particular interest to me, of course, is facilities and recreation. I noticed that listed there were the ballparks, the swimming pool and the arena. I might have missed it, but I didn't see where the tenant courts were listed.
So is that a question? Where are the tennis courts listed?
Yes, I guess, yes.
Ms. Butler, can you?
I am sorry, you are, I do not have the detail on that. I'd have to go right through the report again. I don't have it to talk to me if it's in there or not.
Do you want the page?
Well, I have to go through the whole submission from the rec department.
Well, I've got those two pages.
Yeah, I can do that. I mean, if we want, if you wanted to amend the annual report, council can make that motion, but I don't think there's anything.
But just unless somebody saw it listed there or somebody.
I don't understand.
There's information in text, that's the issue.
Okay, okay. Well, I'd like before it is approved or whatever you do to make sure we have lots of courts and on the heritage registry. And I think they're quite important. And maybe someone knows.
Mr. Alvo.
It's definitely was included in our, in our operation and maintenance budget. If that's what Mrs. Pedditt's referring to, the same, it's the same as in the past.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you wish to see in the annual report about tennis courts. Perhaps you can let us know what you wish to see in there and perhaps we can amend the report to.
Well, I don't know. It just listed, you know, most of the, probably all the facilities except for tenant courts, unless I just don't see them there.
Well, I certainly don't have it in front of me. Perhaps we can get staff to look into it and amend the report to include the fact that we have tennis courts. What is the fact that you would like to have put in there?
Well, I don't know what the requirement is there. I just think they're very important, both historically and recreation programs, children's programs and tourism.
Yes, and I agree. So I think the question is what would you like to see in there so that we can make sure that we amend the report.
Well, I don't know that off the top of my head. So I think we need to know that we have courts. That's a start. But I can just further the discussion with somebody.
So you would like us to amend the annual report to include tennis courts and the fact that we have them?
Well, I think.
Is that?
Yeah, I think they would just fail to see them. Maybe some other things aren't in there.
Okay, then I will get staff to look into the tennis court thing and come back. We will receive the report, or hopefully may receive the report tonight. I'll get staff to go through the report and make sure that tennis courts are highlighted in the report. Mrs. Moore, sorry, Ms. Moore.
The only thing I was going to say is if there is a list of facilities which Ms. Pedditt seems to be referring to, let's just make sure that tennis courts are included in that list of facilities.
I think we got that point.
I think that's what we're talking about.
There's just two pages there that aren't totally.
I understand that totally.
Yeah, okay.
It's nothing to do with numbers or money. It just what.
So is that all right then? We'll get staff to look at the report and include tennis courts in a listing of facilities. Is that fine with you?
Well, I guess. They could let me know what they're doing. That'd be great.
Okay, we'll make sure that staff did that.
Okay.
Anyone else that wishes to address the annual report? Seeing none on the motion to receive, all in favor. Opposed, motion is carried. Motion to adopt the agenda, move by. Spear and seconded by Thatcher, discussion on the agenda for the regular meeting. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Adoption of the minutes. Motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of 23 to 14 be adopted, move by. Moore seconded by. Spear, discussion on the minute. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Delegation from the Roslin Curling Club. Oh, sorry. Oh, I thought you were. Curling Club, please come forward and your delegation.
Yeah.
Hello, Curling Club, fly at it.
My name is Michael Amann. I'm the vice president of the Curling Club and I'm joined by Rob Dara, the president, and Gerald Dara, our secretary. We're here to make a presentation in support of our community funding application and let council know a little bit about the Curling Club. Roslin Curling Club has been in existence over 100 years. We currently have the longest active trophy in the province of British Columbia. And we're making all efforts to continue that as long as we possibly can. Curling Club is involved in many things in the community. We're a supporter of tourism with over 100 people from 20 different countries curling at the club in the past year. Numerous organizations, including the city, hold functions at the Curling Club, retirement parties, meetings, et cetera. The Figure Skating Club, Gymnastics Club have used our facility in the past and continue to, as well as the Golden City Day meetings have taken place there, Interact Club, Fall Fair meetings.
All of which have been done at no charge.
Here we see the ice sheets without the ice in. And very back there, the Gymnastics Club is using the facility in the summer for some of their events. The Curling Club supports our tourism efforts in the city by introducing visitors from around the world to curling. This includes people from Red Mountain who contact us with guests interested in curling, tourists in the winter in general. We've had over 375 drop-in curlers to our facility last year, spanning all ages. We hold ladies' and men's bonsols. And in 2015, the Roslin Legion will be holding the Provincial Legion Bonsol at our facility. The club reinvests in the community with the ice maker and bartender that we have employed. It's a part-time job. We're also supporting ongoing education of the ice maker who the club's paid for the Level 2 ice-making course that he's taking this summer. We support local businesses with the events that we hold, facility upgrades that we undertake by purchasing things within the community, including prizes, food, building materials, et cetera. And in the past year, our club had over 250 volunteer hours from its members. With respect to our lease, which our application will be addressing, over the last number of years, we've had increases of 3% to 5% from the city. Other clubs in the area have three to four more weeks of curling per year than we do. And moving forward, we're looking for a longer-term lease. This past year, we had a one-year lease. In the past, there's been leases of three to five years. So we're looking for something in that range moving forward this year. We've currently, we have around 70% recoverable costs from the city's costs, which is relatively high compared to some other organizations.
Those numbers would be based on the numbers provided by the committee from the city?
So we're looking to try and maintain the costs moving forward for the term of the lease. How do we support this? It's through our Curling Club dues. We basically pay for what you play. The membership numbers there from the different clubs that we have, including the drop-ins, which also include ice rentals by groups. In the 2014 year, we've had to invest in a number of pieces of equipment to maintain the Curling Club. The most recent is the burner purchase. We were trying to get our burner repaired and the B.C. Safety Authority said that it didn't meet regulations, so we ended up having to replace it.
We've not done so yet, but we're in the process of researching ones that we can find. We may find a used one for less, but that's what our budget is.
We've also purchased a new scraper and have new hacks and marks going in for this year. And some of the leasehold improvements that we've undertaken included renovation of the lounge and bathrooms that was completed by the club for roughly $30,000. Our workforce is entirely volunteer for the most part. Looking ahead, the change rooms in the basement that include the washrooms are in need of painting and carpet replacement. And longer term, we're also looking at a need to replace the dehumidifier in the arena. Through discussions with Darren Alvo and the city, we have heard the hockey rink is going through a similar replacement effort in 2016 or 2017. And we would like to complete ours at roughly the same time. Here we see a couple of pictures. Our new scraper on the right and on the left is the improvements to the entrance way that were completed by the city this summer to prevent snow from avalanching off the roof onto the deck. Thank you very much. That looks great. Some of the other items that we're looking to in the future and will be detailed in our application as far as our capital plan or cooler replacements, further improvements to the upstairs. Some potential improvements to the ice making that involves jet ice, is conditioning of the water. And other arenas in, curling rink arenas in the area have heat on the ice, which results in a better ice quality for curling by maintaining the temperature a little better than what we have. And at some point, we'll have to recondition and replace our stones. That's a fairly costly effort as well. And we'll be detailing all that in our application. And here's a picture of the basement where we're looking to paint and put new carpets in this year and next year. Thank you very much for your time. And if anybody has any questions.
Is there any questions of council? Councilor Moore.
Not a question, but I'd like to get a copy of your presentation. If you could give it to the city and they could share with us.
They have it already.
Okay.
So I'm sure Tracy can get it.
Thank you.
Officer Spear.
Yeah, just thanks for the presentation. 375 drop-ins, so is that like one shot each or do you count how many times people come back or is it?
There could be, out of those 375, there could be somebody that went more than once. But like we kept track of just, just for curiosity and there was over 20 different countries represented in. You know, it's kind of neat when you see them next to you and they're coming over asking advice and stuff. And like we've seen, I've had phone calls from people from Spokane that wanted to come up and rent the ice.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you. Okay, the next delegation is from Ministry of Forests and Land and Natural Resources. Mr. Scott and Mr. Upward, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. So please come forward and blind me picture of presentation.
But now we can't hear maps.
I guess we should probably start.
Is that you better?
Just a general overview map here.
Okay, so I'm Ken Scott. I'm the woodland supervisor with B.C. Timber Sales out of Castlegar. This is Dan Upward. He's one of the practices forsters on my field team. And just to start with the lights here, what you're seeing there is just an overall picture of the Cooney Business Area. Just to guide everybody in here. So our Cooney's Business Area goes, includes four field units. So this is the Arrow Field Unit here, so the Big Sheet Valley here, all the way over here to Law Street, Sanmo, all the way up to Trout Lake. So that's the field unit I'm responsible for. And over to Grand Forks is the Boundary Field Unit and then the Cooney Lake Field Unit and then the Crabber Field Unit. And these pink areas are our operating areas. So we're here tonight to just kind of give your council a brief overview of what B.C. Timber Sales is in relationship to the statutory right-of-way agreement that's in place in front of you for decision. We have some plans in the, in our Roslin Forest Development Unit area. And as a result, we've done some mapping, preliminary mapping, and we need to cross the Roslin right-of-way in a couple of places. So with that, so BCTS, just to give everybody just some background information on BCTS, we're the Ministry of, it's a bit of a mouthful there, Ministry of Forest, Lands and Natural Resource Operations. So B.C. Timber Sales was created in 2003 after the 2002 core review. Our goals have recently changed. We used to have four, now we just have one. And that is to provide a credible representative price and cost benchmark data for the market pricing system, MPS. We have three objectives under that. Sell our full BCTS all-annual cut over the business cycle, which has been determined, I believe, at five years. Generate net direct revenue and indirect provincial government revenue over that business cycle. And pursue continuous business improvement within BCTS across government and within third-party partners and customers. So as I just mentioned there, the Cooney Business Area is consisted of four field teams there. At Arrow Field Team, we try and sell 300,000 cubic meters annually. The Roslin Forest Development Unit is within our operating area and we'll show you here in a second. It's a pretty narrow corridor along the highway there, within the Blackjack Ski Club area as well. All our development will be consistent with existing land use plans and applicable legislation. All activities are guided by our environmental management system. So we have field procedures that guide our activities that all our contractors and licensees have access to. So in order to develop some timber sale licenses in there, we need the approval of the city of Roslin in order to cross the right-of-way. A statutory right-of-way agreement has been drafted up. We met last week with Gary Martin. Is that the guy?
Carl.
Carl, Carl Martin. And we looked at all the sites in the field and didn't have any problems at all. So if I had a laser pointer there, you can kind of see a red line there, solid red line. That's your district, district lot there. And just the kind of reference, I don't know, I'll probably have to get up there and make it easier for people to understand. I don't know what it's like looking at maps. It's pretty, I got to apologize, that's a pretty busy map. But here's Gibbard's Cabin right there. Just to put some reference in there for you. This solid red line represents our operating area. So it's a pretty narrow corridor and this is Apple over here in the white.
So you're talking about the solid line that kind of goes like that, sort of an S-shaped thing, Z-shaped thing?
Yeah, this is our operating area. Everything between these two lines.
Between those two, okay.
So we need to cross the right-of-way in a couple of places here. We're going to build a road here instead of coming through the bottom end, through the Blackjack Ski Club area, we're going to build a road here. So the first crossing here is right here. here is right here, and this is the water line right here in these blue dots, that's the water line, so that's our crossing there. And then we've got another crossing here, so the road will go down here, well, it's kind of hard to see. It's going to go here.
Where's that in relation to town or whatever?
Town is way down there.
Yeah, so can you describe it, like, in relation to where the highway is?
So, the highway's just right here.
Yeah.
The Old Glory hiking trail is right there. That's the parking lot to the Old Glory hiking trail right there. The biathlon's just right in here.
How close to town is that, though? I mean, I get those, I get all those markers, but I'm trying to figure out where it actually is in my mind, in relation to the highway.
Do you know Aqueduct Trail at Blackjack? It follows the water line, follows the water line.
Yeah, okay. Just wondering where it intersects the water line there, like, it's okay, I'll figure it out.
So, yeah, the blue dotted line here is the water line, and this creek here is Hannah Creek here. So, our road system's going to come here, it's going to go down here, we're going to have to surface this through here, and it's going to come along here, the existing road, and our second crossing, which is, the road's already existing here, but we're, we'll be crossing it here on the existing road. And then, these yellow here are preliminary areas of interest for, or cut blocks, which are going to make up a timber sale license here. Really hard to see here, but see this little red here, line that's squiggly all along here? That's the right-of-way, and we're going to need to cross it right here. We walk down here, there's no ribbons or anything, it's just timbered here. So in order to get this wood here and not cross the, across the pipeline here, and this is downhill, pretty steep downhill here, the wood's going to get skidded out through here.
What is that right-of-way?
It's just, it's just the status on a map, that's your, I believe, at one point, maybe the water line's going to go down here, and it ended up here.
Is that the road that the city uses to get out to the?
That's correct.
Okay, so that, I think it's called De Champs, De Champs Road, it went out that way?
Yeah.
So that's going through pretty much all of the Blackjack ski trails then, is that what you're talking about?
A portion of it, yeah.
Okay.
It wouldn't cover the southern portion, the sort of, that road that Ken was talking about coming in from the highway at the south here.
Yeah, right here.
So, instead of going back all the way down to the clubhouse, it's not going to do that, it'll just come out Gibbard's Road and hook up to the highway that way. So it would avoid hauling down through the rest of the trails down to the clubhouse and that, oh, that way.
And is it going to be open, are you going to keep it open in the winter, or are you going to keep it, it's just for?
Well, we're going to restrict that, we can, with our timber sale license, we can restrict the timing, so it wouldn't be any active part of seeing here in the winter because of the Blackjack Ski Club and the uses here, so. Because of the, and we wouldn't want to see operations in here in the spring because it's pretty wet in a few places, it's probably just going to be a summer, early fall window for this license, so we could put restrictions on that. So we've got a crossing there, and then, actually, we've got another water line crossing, but it's outside of the Roseland District Lot, just right here, so we looked at that with Gary as well.
Have you consulted with the club executives?
Yes, we did a, we hired a contractor last year to do a thorough stakeholder review with all stakeholders, so all the biking clubs, Blackjack Ski Club, we've done all their comments and pulled that into our plans. So with any of our plans, before we do any timber harvesting or road construction, we do referrals up to the stakeholders so they get an opportunity.
What was their response?
We have a lot of positive responses. People are wanting opportunities to improve existing trails, and I'll just go through here in a little bit. Couple of things we're going to do this summer is improve the parking lot at Old Glory, and the biathlon parking lots. The one at Old Glory, I think we've all seen it there in the winter there, it's really tiny, and it's kind of dangerous for people to pull off, so. So, we've got the layout starting this summer, so people are going to start seeing some ribbons out there. I just mentioned that, the Old Glory and Biathlon Parking Lot, we're going to do some improvements starting in the fall. I believe there's a pretty big biking event here coming up in August, so we're going to delay our timing there sometime in the fall here to get that, that work done, so we're going to expand, make that Old Glory Parking Lot a bit bigger, and then improve the Biathlon Parking Lot because it's sloped down a little bit, and that's what the feedback we got from some of our stakeholders there. Road construction will be starting in the summer of 2015, so that will be, we tend to rope, road contracts under our own BCTS program, and that will happen next summer. And right now, our preliminary plans are to put up the first timber sale license here in the spring of 2016.
Can I ask you a question about the licenses?
Sure.
Do they, is there like, where the road exists, where the trails use the road, is there like a buffer, would there be some trees left, or does it just get really cleared out completely?
It'll vary in a few places there, I don't know if I can go backwards, but we have to manage for visuals along corridors, and it's a partial retention corridor, so some places there will be buffers, some blocks will have 50% retention, so only, there'll be just little, little patches throughout, and others will have more of a clear cut with dispersed leaf trees when they're outside of the visual corridors. So, some of the benefits that we see with our program here is we're going to prove those parking lots, approve ski trail construction through some upgrades, we've got some stakeholder feedback on that. We've also, will approve some access there for Roseland City workers and on the Southwest Access Road, Gary thought that was a pretty good road there. Substantial economic benefit to local contractors, mills, and suppliers as a result of our operations. The stumpage revenue estimated here is anywhere, is estimated between 600,000 and 1.2 million. During the last 10 years, B.C. Timber Sales has generated 360 million in net revenue, issued just over 12,000 in contracts, contributed to 1.1 billion in the communities and the sector, 8,000 suppliers received contracts, and supported 2,200 jobs, planted over 425 million trees here, 26 million in the Kootenays, and we've sold about 10 million here in the Kootenays altogether. And that is it, so, yeah, so we've got a few crossings there for, and I believe that, I'm not sure if the draft statutory right-of-way agreement has been put forward to the council or not, but.
We haven't seen it yet.
Okay. I know it's in place, so.
Is there any questions?
Do you possibly have any stakeholder endorsement letters from the groups that you, the groups that you impacted here? You don't have to give them now, but maybe if you could give them to staff so we could see that, that'd be great.
Sure.
Councilor Spear.
Yeah, so I see the benefits that you've presented there, and thanks for the presentation. Are there any conflicts with the trail system that we have in place right now? In other words, are you going to disrupt trails?
No, we've taken that feedback from a lot of the biking clubs, and we're, potentially we could cross a trail, if we do cross a trail, we'll make sure it's open and left intact, and like we do with other trails, we have to manage for, we put pretty strict rules into play into the timber sale license to make sure that, you know, they're left intact for specifically more and more biking conflicts, if you want to say that, and so yeah, we make sure we do a pretty good job, make sure it's better, as good if not better than was originally.
Okay, thank you. And when you say visual corridors, I get that, and Councilor Moore kind of, she asked the same thing, buffers along areas that are obviously, should be buffed or whatever, and try and, try and leave that visually appealing as opposed to not?
Try to, yes, and we, you know, people also have to realize that specifically up there, you've got wet ground, high winds in places, and wind throw hazard will have to be considered into their, into our layout design as well.
Councilor Thatcher.
Along the same line, I think the biggest concern for most of the members of the Blackjack Ski Club is going to be, are they going to be skiing through clear cuts? That's going to be a big, a big concern.
Right.
And are you going to be disrupting any of the Blackjack trails?
At this point in time, I don't believe we're going to be, well, we're going to be trucking down some of the trails in, in the winter, or not in the winter, but leaving them as, as good if not better than they are today, like that road going in there today, the access road that's existing will have to get graded a little bit and fixed up, so if anything, it'll improve the access.
Yes, and I'm curious about, are some of those cut blocks going to be, you know, the Black Jack Trail's going to be going right through the cuts?
Basically, the Gibbard's thing, that one, most of the blocks on there, if you look closely on the map, are sort of away from the main trails. On the Gibbard's one, as you come up to the cabin, we had some conversation with members of the club and agreed to some small patches on the uphill side, and then a clearing on the lower side to improve the view from the Gibbard's Cabin there, so we're actively working on laying those out this summer. And once we get a draft map together, we'll bring that back to the club for some more comments and too, so we're looking for feedback.
Great, thank you.
Just one more. So do you replant, how soon do you replant the area, do you replant it right of way?
Soon as we can. It all depends on, on the hazard that exists out there and how deep the slash is. If those two factors there kind of lead us into the decision whether we need to site prep, i.e. make more plantable spots, so pile the slash and burn that, those slash piles. Some areas I've seen already may require some mounding, they get, create little mounds for the trees to sit on top of ceilings or still, that are susceptible to frost, so. Generally, if it does require site prep, we plant then the very next spring, because the sooner you plant, the better off you are, get ahead of the competition.
Thank you.
Great, Councilor Blumey.
What do you replant with, and how do you plant?
Well, every, every area's got a biogeographic ecosystem classification, and it basically guides the foresters in determining what species are best suited for that area. We plant with a wide mix of species, up to six species in a block, so it, up there, looking at what's, you know, there's going to be a mixture of fir, spruce, some pine, some cedar, yeah, so there's going to be four or five at least up there as well.
Does that more or less say that you replace the species that have been taken out more or?
Essentially, yeah. There are certain species that, just because of their biological nature, they're just suited better to that, that area, such as the spruce and the fir are going to do quite well in that area, so.
Anything further? Thank you very much for the presentation, very much appreciated.
Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If I can get that blue light up, it'll make me really happy. We're going to write along Unfinished Business, item seven. A request for council decision, women creating change. Is there a motion that council endorses signing the Lower Columbia Community Accord, agreeing to support and encourage value policy decisions and actions which will increase women's access to formal education, learning, skills training, living wage employment, affordable childcare? Is there a mover to that? Move by Moore, second by Spear, discussion?
No real discussion, other than I thought it was a good idea, and it differs, the material in our packet was talking about, we don't do proclamations, this isn't actually a proclamation.
That's mentioned in the report, council.
I know, but the proclamation was in there, the thing about against proclamation, so I was just going to say, it differs from that, and that this is actually asking us to take positive action on these things, so let's do it.
The staff report said that this is not a proclamation.
Well, then why did the staff report include the thing about proclamation?
I don't know, but it mentioned that it's not a proclamation.
Okay, there you go.
Anything further? Other motion, all in favor? Oppose the motion, carry. Request for a decision on the Lower Columbia Community Development Team. Is there a motion that council support the request in principle from the Lower Columbia Community Development Team and the LCI Corporation to fund an economically devoted service to the East End Services Committee by including $30,100 level of support in the city Roseland's financial plan for 2015 budget discussions? Is there a mover to that? Move by Moore, second by Spear, and discussion?
Yeah, I support this initiative, as you know, I think it's really important that we work collaboratively with our neighbors, but we also, you know, need to think of this in the whole context of our budget discussion, so by putting this into our budget discussions, we can, we can do that.
Thank you, Councilor Spear.
Yeah, just briefly, I think the presentation by Terry Van Horn and Mark Martin, I think it was.
Mike Martin.
Mike Martin, sorry. Definitely, you know, showed the activity that's going on with this group, I think it's a, you know, energetic, bright group who are going to, are, and are in the process of moving us forward economically. So, yeah, I think we have to, you know, we have to take the time to make sure that we're putting that into the budget and the financial plan, and I guess the next council will really have the opportunity to discuss it further, but I'm certainly in favor of it as far as a regionalized initiative, so, yeah.
Councilor Blumey.
I'm running against the staff recommendation on this. We have, I think it's been two different occasions, already had council discussions on capital and money to this group, and we've decided, in each case, that we voted against, and those were long discussions, so partly it's been a case of consistency. Also, you know, I feel more comfortable, you know, as a community this size, there are, we've got a lot of stuff to call, to spend our property tax money on, and myself, I mean, I just, coming from a position of a counselor who wants to really, hmm, cut down on the different things that we spend our tax money on, you know, I think this is, this isn't specific enough for us to commit $30,000 to. If they were to come with us with a specific project that we felt directly impacted Roseland in a constructive way, and, you know, I would feel more comfortable providing money for something like that, but, you know, a general regional act of $30,000, when I think, you know, in the general sense, having smaller or, or at least being able to maintain our property tax levels, I think that has probably just as much effect as, as act of, who's going to, regionally is going to have to do. I mean, ultimately, I do support the organization, and I do, you know, I think there are other aspects of my life, or, you know, there are other ways of supporting, but as far as using our budget to support that, we have already argued doesn't need to happen, and so I want to support our past decisions.
Thank you, Councilor Thatcher.
Well, see, I'm not, I'm not against economic development, but we have had this discussion a few times on the LCI. I, I feel more comfortable keeping that $30,000 and putting it to Roseland Development or into some of our Roseland groups, I'd rather keep that money in Roseland. It is a lot of money, and it's, I think we'd be far better off keeping that local, in our, in our, on our municipality, so.
Great, well, what I'd like to say is, is this resolution would agree in principle, agree to the principle, and then we go to 15 budget discussions. I know the LCI is looking at other funding sources and is looking at developing a partnership between all the municipalities, and I think if we agree in principle, then I would expect the LCI to move forward and seek other funding. I have, and I have to say for the record, I have a bit of concerns as I sit on the board of the LCI, and as Moore sits on the, as a liaison to the LCCDT, about approving any money at this time, because there is, there is an issue there, but at, but at this time, I think because we are supporting it in principle, and we're not voting on budget at this time, I think that it would be, it is, would be appropriate for both of us to continue in these discussions. And I, I just would like to reiterate that this would be for budget discussions in 15, and at that time, should that $30,000 change because we've agreed in principle and they have other, other funding, then that decision will be made in 15. I don't think that, I know that this motion is not at this time to approve, to approve $30,000, but it is to say that, okay, we accept in principle, let's see what you can do. So I think that, from my perspective, it would be of value for council to support it at this level. it at this level and when we come back to budget discussions, there may very well be a different discussion, but at this time, I, I think that it may be prudent to support this. Counselor?
Um, one of the things that we had talked about in our previous discussion, we agreed that we supported regional economic development. What we didn't like was the fee that we were charged, not last year, but the year before, which was, I think was forty-two thousand dollars. So we had asked that the group would go back and sharpen their pencils and come back with, uh, you know, a more, uh, a smaller number, which they did. And we didn't approve that number because at the time we were saying, well, there's a hundred and forty thousand dollars left in the kitty and so they should just run their operations on that, which they did. And so they're now coming back to us to say, uh, you know, if you really do support regional economic development, you should consider this. As Mayor Granstrom has said, we are just talking about, talking about this in the next budget discussion. I don't think we're being inconsistent to, to talk about this as, in regional economic development because we've said we support it. Well, if we support it, then we at least need to talk about it and not just, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater, as it were. So, um, also, you know, in various meetings and conferences and things I've been to, it's been said over and over again that for our region to thrive, we need to work together regionally. We can't just say, oh, we're going to keep all our little eggs in our own little Roslyn basket. We need to broaden that to get more people to come. They're not just going to come to Roslyn, they're going to come to the region because there's economic development happening in the region. And to do that, we need to be part of a bigger group, so.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I, you know, I'd like to stress that point too. In fact, um, you know, the regional approach is, I mean, the dynamics of a, of an area with twenty thousand people, which we are in the, the LCCDT, and to go on our own, you know, it, it doesn't make sense anymore. In fact, it doesn't make sense at all from all of the initiatives through tourism, um, in all of the communities that are involved with this. I think that everyone is understanding more and more that we have to have, you know, a concerted, united effort to go forth and really build the economy and get people here and have people working on, um, you know, whether it's, you know, packets of, you know, um, you know, reasons to move here for work or for play and all of those kinds of themes. Um, I think we have to step it up. It's a competitive world and unless we really get the engine driving this, we're going to sit at the same kind of level and continue at this kind of hovering level where we just don't have enough people or have enough, you know, tax revenue or whatever way you want to look at it. And, and I don't know, this kind of excites me because they've restructured, right? They've made changes there and they've made significant changes with the people who are the staff and working there. We saw the energy, um, at council, the, the last meeting and, and to put it in there, um, I, I think it, it will stand Roslyn in good stead, um, moving forward in the future with the regional approach, so I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Is anyone else, Counselor?
Um, I definitely agree with this so-called regional approach to economic development, Granstrom would say, there's no doubt about that. I mean, you know, the argument can be made, and I'm not trying to make it here right now, but the argument can be made that bringing people into the area actually raises the cost of living for people who are living here already and takes, you know, the, the higher money jobs from people who could potentially get it here, um, who are living here already. Uh, you know, there, there are several others. And so I'm not saying we don't, you know, do this kind of, you know, regional marketing and, and all that. I, I say we do do it, but there is a balance and, you know, is that balance really something that the bunch of us around this table can really decide on and, and create for, you know, this region and, and take responsibility for the specific Roslyn taxpayers who are expecting us to do diligence of, you know, the absolute immediate taxing kind of, we, I mean, for us to put our time and effort and, and, I don't know, you know, encourage private investment or, you know, for us to, to put effort into this, I think is great. But as far as using our property tax dollars into something like this that could be argued actually, I think seems a bit difficult for people who are already here, can be argued. I just, I don't think it's, um, I, I don't think it's something that we should actually have in the budget. And so, I don't know, I mean, I know it's in principle, but that whole in principle bit, it, it just feels like it's passing off the responsibility of, oh, I don't really have to be serious, but this thing is in principle. But, um, so I could avoid being the only person saying no, but I, I want to forego that, that, uh, in principle bit and this is how I would vote on that in the real situation.
Great, anything further?
Sorry.
Is this something new, Counselor, because?
Well, it's just kind of a rebuttal on the, you know, bringing more people here takes jobs away from people that are already here. I actually never ever heard of that or thought of it, so it's interesting. Um, however, you know, we, we build our population and I mean, forever that I've been sitting at this table, nine years or whatever it is now, um, you know, we've always been trying to move Roslyn forward with numbers of population, you know, you know, six thousand or five thousand or whatever it would take to sustain our downtown core and maybe bring our taxes down or at least not have to raise them. I mean, the more people you have, the more tax revenue you have. To me, that's, you know, it's kind of an easy calculation. However, with all due respect, um, yeah, so, anyway, that's my point.
All right, I'm not going to get into the economic development function itself, but I think what we're trying to do here is stay in principle and I think there's also a few steps here that will go to the East End Services Committee, it will go to other places. So I think right now, if council can make the decision to support in principle or not, then we can move forward and, uh, for fifteen budget discussions. So I will call the question on the motion. Do you have the motion, please?
Um, that council supports the request in principle from the Lower Columbia Community Development Team and the Lower Columbia Initiative Corporation to fund an economic development service through the East End Services Committee by including the thirty thousand one hundred dollars level of support into the City of Roslyn 2015 to 2019 five-year financial plan for the 2015 budget discussion.
Thank you. And that may have seemed like an ignorant question, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew what we were doing. Okay, so on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Sorry, let's do that again. On the motion, all in favor, because I didn't raise my hand. Opposed? Motion's carried. Uh, item eight, request for a council decision, a variance permit application, eight oh four White Tail Drive, I know it's hard. Is there a motion that council approves the development variance permit application to vary the front set back from four to point three, uh, three, uh, three point seven meter variance and an increased driveway width from four to five, a one meter variance to allow the building of a two-car garage for the properties that you described as P-Lot nineteen, Plan, please, I hope you can read it there, NEPA three two nine three, section twenty-six, township nine eight, Cutney Land District located at eight oh five White Tail Drive. Is there a mover? Moved by Spear, seconded by Thatcher. Discussion, Spear.
Yeah, um, I actually, you know, was a little bit concerned about the letter of the neighbor, the non-neighbor, the person who owns the lot beside, and so I went down and looked at it and actually Brian and Shannon were actually there, so they explained it to me and it makes good sense. I mean, um, two-car garage, it's exactly the height of like their lowest level of their house, so it's down here and then there seems to be a significant amount of property, like from the, from the pavement to the, to where the, um, beginning of the garage will be. So, you know, it, you know, like I said to them, I mean, they got cars, they got stuff. I mean, um, to build a, a nice garage and, and make it look nice is going to enhance that area for sure, so. I don't see it as an issue with regards to the concern from the neighbor proponent there.
Right. Can I just ask Ms. Leggorn, the variance to point three, still would leave how much to the asphalt? Do you have that roughly?
Roughly, probably seven meters.
Seven meters, so it's twenty-one feet set back from the road. Anything further discussion? Counselor Moore?
I wanted to, he seconded it.
Oh, sorry. Uh...
I, I too was initially concerned with that letter, uh, from the neighboring lot. Uh, and the only other concern I had was, was the height of the garage, but if that level, the height of that garage is below the level of that deck, it's really not going to cut off any view, you know, any, uh, sighted lines from, line sites from, you know, driving up that road. And it would improve, you know, parking along the roadway and I think it'd probably clean up the area quite a bit, so.
It might get those toys off the street. Further discussion?
Just thinking about the toys. Um, no, actually, I'm okay.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Uh, thank you, Ms. Leggorn, for a nice, a very thorough report. Request for council decision, development variance permit application sixteen eighty-four Leroy. Is there a motion that someone buy me a new mouse? Is there a motion that council approved the development variance permit application to vary the exterior side setback from three to one point four, a one point six meter variance to allow the proposed new home and garage for the property that you described as Lot ten, Block eight, Plan number NEP five seven nine, District Lot five three five, Land District twenty-six, located at sixteen eighty-four Leroy Avenue. Is there a mover to that? Moved by Moore, seconded by Thatcher. Discussion, Moore?
Uh, no, it looks fine.
Thatcher?
No, I had no problems with it.
Further? Yeah?
Yeah, it, it's the corner lot, right? Like it's, they've got the existing house and then it's the corner, like that's, that's deep Davis Street right above, right? Going in there? Yeah. No problem with snow removal or anything like that?
No, no problem. It's a huge bowl of ours there.
Okay.
Can we go through the chair, please?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I lived across the street there for a long, long time and I know the property quite well and I know the snow removal quite well and I totally agree with that. So on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? The motion's carried. A development permit application fourteen oh four Leroy, council approved development variance application to vary the height requirement for a detached secondary suite above a garage from six meters to seven point one five, a one point one five meter variance to allow for an increase in height of a proposed attached secondary suite for the property that you described as parcel B, Block eight, Plan NEP six one six, Section thirty-five, Township nine eight, Cutney Land District, being consolidation of Lots one and two, see that located at fourteen oh four Leroy. Is there a mover to that? Moore, seconded by Spear. Discussion, Moore?
No, I'm good. I appreciate the fact someone's putting in a secondary suite. It's great.
Spear?
No, it's good.
Anything further? On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? The motion's carried.
Could I just make a comment or make a question to Stacy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Stacy, uh, through, you, you were...
Thank you.
Um, do you see that we're, um, faced with more variances of late because of the new zoning bylaw or is it just my?
No, it's actually not the same.
Okay, okay.
When you look back through the years.
Yeah.
The time of year is just a busy time.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you. Uh, item D, request for council decision, resolve that council approved the development permit application from RMR Acquisition Corp. for the following properties shown on the attached map. I'm not going to read them all out. I think if anyone needs exactly what they are, pull your hand up and we'll give them to you. Don't see any hands. Subject to the following conditions, that the applicant meet the requirements for sedimentation prevention, uh, that's item one, drainage erosion control, uh, that is described in the OCP, that the applicant retain an environmental monitor to ensure that best management practices and environmental recommendations are correctly implemented and mitigated measures are adequate, that the applicant complies with Minister Forrest Lands and Natural Resources operation regulations as noted in the attached letter and conditions dated June thirtieth to fourteenth, that the applicant consider Red Mountain Design Guidelines when building and locating the mechanical sheds in particular design and locate mechanical sheds. So the function, so they function while they do not become an ISO, is there a mover to that? Moved by? Thatcher, seconded by? Bloomey, discussion, Counselor?
Uh, no, I, I've, uh, agreed with this all along and I think we should start moving forward with it so that, uh, you know, things can start moving forward. I think it's, I think it's a good plan. I don't have any problems with this at all.
Thank you, Counselor Bloomey.
Um, no, exactly. We need to move forward quickly because winter's coming and, um, you know, I'm in favor of this with the understanding that when the actual agreement about water use and all that comes in force, that we'll have a chance to discuss that then. I mean, it's, um, I'm fully in favor of changing the OCP and also this permit application form.
Thank you. Further?
Um, yeah, I'm really glad that Mr. Thompson is here because I actually do have a couple of questions. Um, I'm also in favor of this. I think it's, I think it's fine, but I just was curious whether in looking at this idea of snowmaking, if, uh, the pools on Red Mountain that have all that water in them were considered and also if getting water from Little, from, from West Little Sheep was considered, because there are other options that might require less pumping or less city water and I'm just curious if they were discussed.
Well, I'll answer the question because they were discussed, Red Mountain, and Mr. Albo can confirm that. I've looked at all the sources that were mentioned, especially by a delegation that came here, and this was the most cost-effective.
Okay, it's too bad council didn't get some of that information.
We did get that information, but it was quite some time ago. Yes, we did. But anyway, perhaps I can find it for you and say, no, I can't because I lost everything. But anyway, we did get the information, so. Anything further? On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? The motion's carried. Career Development Services Coin for Change Fundraising Awareness Event throughout the homeless for council participation. I, let me find it.
What's the request, anyway?
Sorry, I'm slower. Anyway, what we, what we're asking, I believe what they're asking is that if there's any counselors that wish to participate, correct? Thank you. So, is there any counselors that are, can participate in the September twelfth, September twelfth event?
Can I comment?
Sure.
Okay. I think it's a great initiative and I would participate if I was going to be here, but I am out of town on September twelfth, so I'm wondering if there's perhaps some other way that council, if there's anyone else who wants to participate, then we could get a pledge sheet going or if there's some other way that council could participate, because homelessness affects every, affects the whole greater trail area, so.
Perhaps then what you may wish to do is say that you will discuss with those people if there is a way and you could be the champion of, of that process and see if there's a way that you can get council involvement in that and you can communicate, we'll set you up so you can communicate with them.
Okay.
Is that, is that fair? So is there anyone else that wishes to, that can attend? I know I'm away as well, but.
No.
Anyway, if, we'll leave it at that, okay? So, uh, Counselor Moore will be in contact with the, with the group, sorry, I don't have your official name in front of me because I can't do it, and, uh, go from there, okay? So I don't know that we need a motion on that. I think that that's pretty well done, Counselor. Are you happy with that?
Fine.
Great, thank you very much. Information items, a motion to receive the information items and act on their recommendation. Moved by? Subject to? Moved by? Counselor?
Sure.
Spear, and seconded by? Counselor Bloomey. Discussion items, which ones would we like to discuss? This would be a first.
No, I have...
You're first.
No one else says?
You're first.
Okay. A, B, C, um, I, I hope I have the right letters. I'll tell you.
Well, let me know if you don't.
Exactly, I will.
I know.
Mm-hmm.
A, B, C, I.
A, B, C, I.
Counselor Bloomey.
Maybe I fell asleep during the...
Counselor Moore.
I'm sorry, what did she say?
She doesn't have one?
A, B, C, I, oh.
Um, G and H.
Hmm.
Counselor Thatcher? Okay, A, Counselor?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Um, oh, so this is about the UBCM and it is a bit of a tangent from the actual, um, whatever it was that I was reading, the compass, the UBCM compass. But, you know, I was thinking about Counselor Moore's comments that went into her minutes, the minutes last time about people not going to the UBCM, if you're not going to run for council next time, and in fact, a couple of things. Firstly, your term is for three years, which means our term ends in November and that we are representatives of the community until then and therefore we should be going to the UBCM if we choose. Um, and the other thing is that if every three years or not, it will be four years, that elected officials didn't go to the UBCM in that last year prior to the election, then the attendance to me would be personally dismal or weak or at least probably thirty-three percent of the people wouldn't be there. So I just, you know, I just wanted to comment on that because I, I guess I strongly disagree with that approach and, uh, yeah, so I just wanted to say that with regards to the compass that came out about the UBCM.
Okay, thank you. I don't know that we need to discuss that. Anything further?
Well, I think it's fair to...
No, but, no, but I don't want to have a discussion on that part.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the information item is the newsletter.
Yeah.
Okay, Community and Bloom.
Can I comment?
No. Community and Bloom.
I'll get out later, Jill.
I think we've, we've done this, we've commented and we sent it back and forth and I don't, this is not the time for that. This is information.
Send me an email.
I will.
Um.
This is A. It's done. Okay, nobody else on A? B.
Communities and Bloom.
Yes.
So, um, you know, I thought that was a really nice offer from Trail, actually, in that, um, you know, the, the whole, I think that whole project really works well in Trail and probably other communities. I don't feel that it's something that Rosin would really want to embark on from my perspective with the reconstruction of the downtown core and all beautiful plants and all that. I couldn't even see those kinds of annual flowers fitting into our, um, design of downtown. So, um, unless other counselors want to embark on that project, um, I think that we should send a nice thank you letter to Trail. Um, and just say that, you know, in the future we may think about it. But I think we have other things really that are important, more important than buying annual flowers for a couple of reasons. One, they take a ton of water. And secondly, we've got all kinds of things in Rosin that need attention that we need to spend taxpayers' money on. So could we send a nice letter unless council wants to go forth with that?
Yes, we will, unless there's someone that wishes to go. And I also think it's very important to know that the city of Trail spends over half a million dollars on Community and Bloom.
Exactly.
So is there anyone that wishes to go to Community and Bloom?
A million?
No. So seeing that, we will send a very nice letter in response to the RSVP.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, C, Councilor, you have that as well?
I did. Oh, Youth Action Network, the summary and budget. I just wanted to say that I thought that that report was really great and that, that whole Youth Action Network week that the kids put on and the adults that were involved and the, just the whole, you know, the whole spectac that week was, um, really, uh, needs to be acknowledged. Um, so, yeah, I'm not sure if we want to send a thank you letter to them. I thought it was just a really great week's project and I'm sure that next year it will be even better.
Great, thank you. Further on that? G.
Uh, G, that was me. Um, so this was for the municipal auditor response and I'd sent around my comments before. I'd totally forgotten that Ms. Hunter had asked us to send things out in advance. So I got, I went out kind of late. Anyway, I'm really glad to see that she's working, going ahead and tackling these things. I'd like to see them added on to the staff action list that we get, if we could, because I think it's good to have things on a list and then you can check them off when you do them and you don't forget about them when they, when they aren't done. Um, so do I need a motion for that or will that just happen?
I think, no, I think we have your comments and I think the, the ones that you mentioned about, you know, putting it on the staff action list and all that, I think that's pretty much a done deal.
Okay, that's good. Well, that would be the first time it has been because we didn't have last year's on, so that would be great. And then my question about when we'll actually get a budget to actual financial report.
Well, I think we just got over, we just got over tax time and, uh, I think we're, we're getting to the point now where we can breathe a little bit more.
Okay, that's good. That is something that we should get quarterly. Um, and we used to when Ms. Tim was here and we haven't since she left. So that's a long time to be without quarterly budget to actual reports. So I look forward to that. And that's it.
Great, council has made that request, right? For budget to, council has made that request. It's already a motion.
Well, there was. It was a motion in December and we're supposed to get a quarterly report first quarter. And I, I understand we're busy, but.
There's a motion of council, so that's, we don't need to make another motion, that's my point.
We don't need to make another motion. We just need to see that motion come to life.
Thank you. Anything further on G?
Um, well, the only thing was the contaminated sites thing, that I was a little concerned about the timeline on that because of what the province is requiring, that you get your list, you know, your, your list in twenty thirteen, you get your baseline data in twenty fourteen and then you start to do comparisons in twenty fifteen. And I'm just, I'm just concerned, you know, there were a lot of questions in the staff report. It seemed like there was a lot there and I didn't know, I don't know how complicated a process it is and whether we need to think about hiring a consultant to help us with that or whether staff can handle it.
I think, yeah, and I agree that, uh, we should figure that out. But if staff needs help, I'm sure they'll come to council.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further on G? Moving right along, H.
Uh, that was me too. That's the disclosure of related parties.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it came, I'm assuming when we, when it gets finalized, it'll be in policy format, right? With the number and the date and all that stuff, the way we usually see policies? Or is it not? I think staff has a comment.
You worship, this isn't really a policy. It is a document that has to be done. It's like the financial disclosure act we have to fill out. So it's not a policy where if there's any leeway to either doing it or not doing it. It's actually, it has to be done.
Okay.
So it's in the policy form, you somewhat wash it out.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't understand that. So it, does it have to be filed with the province then? Is that?
No.
We just?
We have to go online.
We keep it, okay. Um, okay, then I had another ques, a number of questions about it, like, you know, tough, tough, you need to fill it out if circumstances change, but then it doesn't sort of define what changed circumstances are. So it's a little, it's a little vague.
Well, that would be if you had a closure, if somebody bought a company when they were on council or if you bought into a company or whenever there's a change like that.
Okay.
So the changes would be.
Right, I wonder if.
Relate to the policy, that relate to the, um, disclosure form.
Yeah, I wonder if there should be some sort of, I don't know, definition or something about that, someone, you know.
Yeah, it's all described in P S A.
Yeah, it's in all in P S A.
Okay, all right. Well, I didn't look at P S A, so that's good. Um, and then also I'm just wondering if it somewhere needs to say that this, the relationship that is happening there has something to do with city business? You know, because it, it never actually talks about the city, you know, and then, and then.
It just has to be potential.
Yes, potential. So then is it, is it sort of like everything? Like if you belong to a nonprofit group, you're a member of it, but you're not an executive board member of it? Do you put on your membership of the group or?
Anything that we're multi, it just come up.
Okay. And so it would be like you'd identify your employer, you'd identify your spouse's employer, all of that kind of stuff. Okay. That's good.
Air on the side of more disclosure than not.
Okay, yeah, that's good. And actually in that, I was thinking, when it talks about family, that it's just talking about husband, wife, mother, father, child. I was thinking we should expand it to cousins.
Well, that's, but that's the P S A regulations, right?
Is it? So we can't, we can't make it.
Well, I don't know cousins in there, but as Tracy said, air on the side of more information than less.
Yeah, well, in that case, let's include cousins, aunts and uncles.
Well.
So, um.
We'll go by what's in the regulations, I think.
Well, yes, except we want this to be meaningful. We want it to be.
You have to find in P S A quite detailed.
Of just the relationships that it covers.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's far more detailed than what's here.
Okay, well, that's good. Um, okay. And then also I'm, I'm looking at this like, like would this form be filled out by a contractor? Like we're looking at an engineering contract for a five-year thing. So that, that contractor would also fill this out and talk about any of the relationships they have with anyone that happens to be in the city or on council. Okay, that's good. Um, let's see. Oh, yeah, okay. On page, on page one eighty-one, I found some of the language to be, when you're, like, where it says a relative. So it. I'm on page one eighty-one and it, we're down, under definitions, it says a relative and it says, it says that individual and then it refers to reporting enterprise. And so I'm just wondering, is that individual the employee, right? Because you've got a relative as a related individual, including spouse, child, brother, blah, 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 who may be expected to influence or be influenced by? Is that individual referring to the city employee? And is the reporting enterprise the city or it's, it's not? I, I, I found it just kind of hard to, hard to track. It is the city, okay. Maybe we could just say the city. Yeah. I don't know, it just, it was just kind of weird, weird language, I thought.
Is there anything further on this G? No, sorry, it's H.
No, that's it.
Thank you. I.
Okay, that was me. I just, I guess I was looking for a little bit of clarification, that this is kind of an umbrella RFP for five years of general engineering and then, so we're going to commit to five years of engineering with the, whoever gets this.
Counsel's recommend, or counsel's motion was to.
Right.
This out for tender to get.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So this is just what's gone out to tender then?
Well, it hasn't gone yet, it's just for.
Oh, okay.
It will be going if we.
If we approve or if.
We agree with it.
Yeah, okay. Um, I just had a question on page one ninety. There's a chart there of criteria. Is that standard, is that a standard set of criteria? Page one ninety?
Mr. Albo?
The table there, this right here.
Page one ninety in front of you?
Yeah.
Is that twenty?
We looked at three different RFPs out there.
Yeah.
For engineering services and we compiled to what we felt fit us the best.
Okay.
So that's where you see the, uh, the point system. And, um, and it is, it is very close to, to two out of ones.
Okay, so the availability of personnel and location of office, given twenty points? I was just a little bit curious about that because that seems weighted fairly heavily. In other words.
Well, shouldn't it be?
Yeah, I get it, I get it. But in, with today, well, no, we don't want to throw into office, but, um, so that's pretty standard there.
They're on point.
Thank you, I'm on point.
Ms. Butler? Okay, great. Anything further? All right, on the.
Yeah, I had a few on that, on that engineering, let's allow. Um, let's see. So there's a thing here and I'm on page one eighty-four. That says there'll be no need for further RFP for the work.
Can't be eighty-four, that's the title page.
No, it's, no, it isn't that one. I've got the wrong page. Um, oh wait, page one eighty-six. Six, and it says, entering into this agreement, allow the city staff to work directly with the consultant without the need to prepare a separate request or proposal for each project. And then it lists a whole bunch of projects that this could cover. If you go down on one eighty-seven, things like, that I didn't highlight, but like, you know, like, and some of it's construction, right? So if we're looking at construction on some of these things like, uh, reconstruction of roads, water treatment plant upgrades, wall replacement. So are we then obligated to use this company to do that? No, we're not. Even though it says they, so we could choose to put those things out to tender if we want, even though it's listed in the things we might ask them to do. Or not required. Okay, that's good. Um, I'd also like to have them, is one of the things that they're, they're asked to provide is to reply, to provide some sort of sample reporting template so we know what sort of information they'll be giving back to us and particularly what would come to council as a, for, to enable us to have some oversight. That's on page one eighty-nine. It's talking about, ooh, I think it was proponents required to provide, uh, yeah. It's in that section where the, things they're required to provide. You know, I think they're just whatever they traditionally do so we can see how they report back to the client. Would that be possible to add?
I'm sorry, I'm reading the one paragraph where we've got a proposed methodology for managing and charging out times on projects. So that's what we're asking for in their, in their package of, you know, how do they, how do they propose of, of charging out those jobs and, and completing those jobs, those tasks.
Yeah, I mean, that to me looks like how you're, how you're billing for it. What I'm talking about is how they're reporting on progress. Are they, you know, you know, like we got the, we got the calendar of, of a project for some of the other, like Cop Ken had given us, I think it was Cop Ken, I mean, it was I S L gave us. They said this is what they're going to do in these weeks and here's their progress towards it, that kind of thing. And how many hours each of these things is going to take. So I thought it was a little more specific than just how they're, they're billing. Is that encompassed in that?
That would be all part of the process.
Yes.
Well, is it? I don't.
I still, I still think that in the, in the paragraph, a proposed methodology for managing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, right there tells me how they're going to approach that. And then following that, it's the charge out time on projects, on how they're going to, the methodology for managing that as well, so.
Okay, I guess I read that as managing the time, right? The time, the, the billable hours. I was thinking that is just an invoicing kind of a bullet. But you're talking about the whole project.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's good. I'm okay with that. Um, and then on page one ninety, I found that the, uh, under the evaluation and selection, it says manager of operations and staff, city or else will review and make shortlist consultants and hold interviews or make recommendations to the mayor and council to award to a consultant. Negotiate, it's like a, it, it seems like it ought to be two sentences. You know, you could, the next sentence should say that the manager of operations will make recommendations to mayor and council because it kind of sounds like you could do either or. You could shortlist and hold interviews or you could make recommendations to council. But, no, anyway. I just found it unclear, but maybe no one else did. Um, or if you did, you can, you can sort that out. And then the other thing on page one ninety-two, I'm just curious, in this particular contract, um, why are we talking about drawings? Because this is just a contract for, we're not asking for any drawings, right? In our execution of contract? It just seems like it's sort of obscuring. One ninety-two, execution of contract, right?
You know what, that was just generic in, in, in most of the RFPs, so.
Okay.
You're right, I mean, there's, there's no drawings applicable to this one.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm looking at it as, it should make it as applicable to what we're, we're doing as possible.
Yeah.
Um, and then also it was unclear on one ninety-three. It says if the proponent is corporations would be if the proponent is a corporation or if it's multiple proponents, then it's our corporations. You know, proponents is a corporation, doesn't make sense particularly. Um, and then on one ninety-seven.
Sorry.
I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. If you want to do anything with it, that, that's, that's great. If you're happy with the way it is.
Well, it makes sense, I got one.
Yeah, I mean, um, one ninety-seven talks about significant modifications that all proponents can resubmit. And I'm just thinking, what is, we don't define significant modifications anywhere. Is there, and I don't know in the construction world if there's a way, like if it's a ten percent difference or a dollar amount percentage difference or something, is that, is that me?
I, I'm totally lost now. I don't know.
Yeah, you know what? I'm not sure.
If we're wordsmithing this, then.
Oh, it's in F. It's on one ninety-seven F. Lost now. We're not wordsmithing, we're just trying to, well, maybe we're wordsmithing a little bit. It's like you just, you want to be clear, right? You're putting this out and it has hundreds of thousands of dollars attached to it. I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be clear. Um, and along with that, at the top of one ninety-seven, now we start to use the word contractors, whereas before we use the word successful proponent, so, and contractor isn't defined. So. And, yeah, there's some other inconsistent, successful proponent one place, prime contractor in another place, it's just inconsistent. But I think people follow it for that. And that's it.
Thank you. Any further on this one? On the motion, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried?
Can you do a computer?
Whoa, I need that too. We're at bylaws, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Item eleven.
Item eleven, bylaw, request for council to decision, bylaw twenty-five seventy-two, local government election procedure bylaw twenty-fourteen, motion that council adopt bylaw twenty-five seventy-two, local government election procedure bylaw, move by. Thatcher seconded by Spear, discussion? Spear?
Hello, yeah, no.
No, further? On the motion, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried. Council's decision, bylaw twenty-five seventy-three, O C P amendment bylaw, scheduled to snowmaking planning assistant, from the planning system. Is there a motion that council read the official community, council reads the official community plan amendment bylaw twenty-five seventy-three, twenty-fourteen, three, for the first and second time, and schedules a public hearing for August eleventh, twenty, twenty-fourteen, with the following conditions addressed in the water use agreement to be considered by council? So is there a mover to read the O C P amendment first and second time? By Spear, seconded by Bloom, discussion?
No, I think we already had it.
I think so too. Counselor Bloom?
No, same thing, I'll have them to say when the water agreement comes in.
Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I mean, I'll think, this will go when the water agreement's there too, but I'm just curious, on the number two, says the design review of snowmaking infrastructure should be conducted by city staff prior to approving construction of proposed works. I'm concerned that, um, snowmaking infrastructure might be kind of specialized, and that city staff may not have the expertise, so I'd rather have that say that design review of snowmaking infrastructure be conducted by a consultant selected by the city and paid for by the proponent, prior to approval and construction of proposed works. And if we need that, we can, if we don't need it, then we don't do it.
I think that we would leave that up to staff, that's staff's job, and I think if staff needs help, they will ask for help. Counselor Bloom?
Um, also, that's referring, the point that there is referring to the conditions that would be addressed in the water use agreement, so it's not really conditional on the snow making.
No, it's true, I'm just making a comment about it because it's in this report.
Further discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried. Zoning amendment bylaw, Cook Avenue, resolve that council give first and second reading to zoning amendment bylaw twenty-five sixty-three, and schedule a public hearing on August eleventh, with the following conditions? Hey? Okay. You writing Braille or what? That's okay, just... Positive or trace, and we're all good.
Should have written the definition, should have had that written out yesterday.
Okay, so, back on track, the motion that council give first and second reading to zoning amendment bylaw twenty-five sixty-three, and schedule a public hearing on August eleventh, with the conditions signed, be posted, that Cliff Street right of way remains a green space, I go, that, that three meter snow story statutory right of way will be registered on the properties where the Abut Thompson, Monita, and Cook, that the owner must not, Cook has no E, ladies and gentlemen, that the owner must not use any part of their land as a driveway or other means of vehicular access to Thompson Avenue, Cliff Street, and Monita Street. And access to both lots is limited to no more than two points on Cook Avenue, spelled correctly, between Monita and Cliff Street right of ways, is there a mover to that? Move by Moore, seconded by Thatcher, discussion? Thatcher?
No.
Discussion?
No, we've had a lot.
On the motion, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried. Counselor Bloom, I know you can't hear me, but, if someone, Stacy, can you go grab Counselor here, thank you? Members' reports?
Start on the other side, please.
Hi?
Start on the other side, please. You started here with the...
Notice I looked to the left, Counselor Moore?
Okay, um, I have quite a few comments that I'm not going to make tonight on the reports that had to do with snowmaking, but I think they are relevant before we do the actual water agreement, but I might also like to meet with the Red Mountain folks and talk to them about it, because I think they're the ones that can answer my questions. So I'll do that on my own, so stop glaring at me.
No, I know, you...
But I think it's really important to have a really good discussion.
You want to bring something up, but you don't want to talk about it, well, then don't bring it up.
No, but, because I think, I think, no, what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is, I think there are a number of issues that we need to know, at least I'm curious about. If you're not, that's fine, but I'm curious about, so for me to endorse the water agreement that I really want to endorse, because I want to see snowmaking proceed, but I want to do my due diligence to make sure those questions are answered. So anyway, I will, may be reporting back to council on what I find out after I've had my conversation. So, sustainability meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum. I've got an L C C D team meeting on Thursday. I'm very pleased with the mayor's response to the citizen on Plumen, and the solutions that he crafted there, that's excellent. Um, the A G, O G committee, that consists of Carrie and myself, has not been able to coordinate to meet with Ms. Hunter. Ms. Hunter's been very willing to meet, and I have not heard boo from Carrie, so, I don't know. I don't know what happens, I was hoping again to talk to him tonight, but he wasn't there again. And that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Bloom?
Um, no, actually, I've decided to talk to my...
Thank you. Counselor Thatcher?
No, I, no, I should, museum board hasn't met, it's been a quiet summer, and hope it stays open.
Because it's short.
Counselor Moore?
Yeah, yeah, just a couple of things, um, wanted to, um, acknowledge and thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting on the Canada Day celebrations, again, well done. Um, I think there was a little bit of neglect in the Roseland news about, you know, that the Chamber takes a huge part in that, and that if it wasn't for the Chamber, that probably wouldn't go. So thank you immensely to the Chamber for pulling that off.
Can I just ask you a favor?
Yeah.
Could you send a letter to the Roseland News, to Ms. House, for example?
I certainly could.
With your concerns, because I appreciate that too, because that was rather, well, leave it in your capable plan.
I'll put it on my to-do list.
Thanks.
All right, um, yeah, so, wonderful work again, and, and thank you to Chamber. I just wanted to ask if it's possible for public works, and I'm not sure if it is, but the old, the Red Mountain Road, the old road that goes out the back, the back road, where the trail crosses there, where you've got Larry's Loop, and you've got Centennial Trail, and Centennial carries on, you know the stretch of road where you have to cross to walk across there? Is, you know what I mean, there's signs there now.
Crosswalk signs?
Yeah, the crosswalk sign.
Yep.
Is there any way to paint those wide, just, you know, those wide swaths of paint across there? Because even though those signs are there, and there's activity going on at Red, with the hotel being built, et cetera, I just wonder if it would be a good move for us to paint that, because visually, I think you see those marks on the road. But anyway, is that our jurisdiction to do that kind of thing?
That's our road.
Yeah, so...
Where are you talking about, where?
Where Centennial Trail crosses over to Feeny Road, is what I was saying.
No, Feeny Road, no, 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 just where Centennial Trail crosses, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, just right there, because the sight lines, actually, when you come out from, oh, Flanagan Road, if you want to call it that, um, yeah, looking up, it's really hard, because it is, so, I don't know, I just think it's a, it's a good precaution when there's traffic on there in the summer, and I've, I'm out there a lot, and it's not that people are particularly driving fast, it's just they've got a destination in mind.
We could maybe...
Something to consider.
Buy us some latex paint and a brush.
Yeah, I could, I probably have some in my garage, like...
Anyway, Darren, maybe you can see if you can do it.
Yeah, could you? Getting them back, you know, if they're back to the area, it's not a problem.
Oh, they have to do it, the painter guys do it?
Yeah, we don't do it.
Oh, okay, can you just put on your to-do list for the future, maybe? Even, thanks, maybe next year would be great, thank you. Um, when is the bear going to be sighted downtown? I assume that that's the, that's the stand, and I just wonder when...
What if I haven't had an update on that?
No, I don't know either.
It's gonna be August.
Fill you in there, the, give that name.
Please, yeah, please.
The, um, the person's building of there, uh, has taken ill.
Oh.
And so, the delivery, somewhere for treatment, the delivery, I believe, is at the end of August.
Okay.
But, we meet tomorrow night, so I might get a little better update.
Okay, maybe you could just throw out an email or something?
Yeah, thank you, we'd appreciate an email, thank you.
Okay, I'll try to...
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor?
Um, I just also wondered about the Climate and Energy Action Awards at U B C M. Have, has our car share program, or has the S E, I don't know, just, you know, how, Climate and Energy Action? Car share program, that is...
They didn't apply for it, I don't know.
Okay. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, so everyone's done like dinner, except me. Uh, the city, along with the Heritage Commission, dedicated the bench to Chick Grizzly Jones on whatever day it was, a couple of days ago.
Thursday.
Thursday, and there was quite a good crew there, uh, if you notice, it's a very special tree, the bench is in place, the sprinklers put in, and the grass is growing, so that was a nice little memorial to a very long time Roseland, and a great guy.
Too bad council didn't get a notification of that.
The, we were not asked to do that, the family was very specific, they wanted it very low-key.
Okay.
Uh, regional district, East End Fire Service, cost comparison, comparison and implementation for, there's a, there's a, East End Services Committee meeting tomorrow, and in that meeting, there is an implementation plan to hire four new firemen, and a half a million dollar fire training center. The, the request is to put a phased-in approach into the five-year, it's not, certainly it's not, the report's not received yet, but I'm just telling, is to implement this over time, and at the end of five years, the regional fire service budget will go up six hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, on behalf of the city of Roseland, I am going to speak very much against it. That's tomorrow, and I just, for everyone's information, I've had discussions with other, again, with other jurisdictions, and actually other people in the fire service that feel that we need to say something. The, in the information package, I sent the, sent to Ms. Butler, and it will come out in the information package this Friday, I asked for a cost comparison, and the cost comparisons are there. Well, I'll let you look for it yourself, but when we compare ourselves to Calcigar, Grand Forks, Creston, what we pay for fire service is exponentially higher, and I don't know that our community is any safer. So I encourage everyone, and perhaps the press could get a copy of that too, if they want, they can just ask Ms. Butler, and she'll send you the link. But I think it's time that, I mean, another six hundred thousand dollars to the fire service would make costs per household in Roseland, uh, hedging on the four hundred dollar household, where in Creston, it's less than two hundred, and Calcigar is one thirty, so, we need some further discussion there. Yeah, well, go ahead, no, that's fine.
What, is, those meetings open, the regional?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And what time's that meeting at tomorrow?
Tomorrow at three.
Three, at the regional district?
Yeah, at the, yeah, at the regional district. And I don't know why there's not any press there, it's beyond me, however, there aren't.
I wouldn't ask you to go without one.
No, I'm not asking you to go, what I, I don't understand, this is a huge story in, in our regional district. It's a huge story, along with the sewer, and we rarely see press at those meetings, and, hmm, just thought if the press need the story, there's a couple of good ones happening. Now, I just want to, just move right along, that, uh, thank you, Counselor Moore, for saying thanks to discuss with those people up on Plumen Way, I think we've got it all figured out, thanks to Darren. And what I would like to see is, and I guess I'll ask for a motion, that council approve the expenditure of, I think it's around five thousand dollars, Darren's already done the math, I don't know if you, did you bring the reports to me there?
I didn't, no.
No, that's what...
I couldn't, I couldn't get them.
But I would like to have council approve the purchase of a speed board, and what the speed board would be, would be a mobile board, that when we get complaints from neighborhoods like Thompson, like Plumen Way, that's saying that people are speeding, we say, okay, here's a speed board, put it in your community, have a couple of people man it, log the amount of cars that go by, and the amount of cars that are speeding, so that we have some data, so that we take the data to the R C M P and say, this is how many cars came by here, this is how many were speeding over this period of time. We think you need a car, right now, we need a car on site, right now, when we say, think you need a car on site, they say, well, we're busy, but if we could prove with data that there's a need, then perhaps we could have the R C M P attend these kinds of things. So, uh...
Oh, sorry.
So I just would like a motion subject to cost, I guess I could say that, because Darren doesn't have the finite cost, and they're around five thousand bucks, and we would have it in our possession. Can I get a motion first, otherwise, forget it?
Yeah, hold on a minute.
Move by Moore, seconded by Thatcher.
Um, yeah, I mean, we need to see the costs, and see what, how, how long the thing lasts, and all the information, but I think it's a good idea, we've had a number of complaints in various areas.
And it would fit everywhere.
Yeah.
No, I, I think it's a good idea, but I think a couple of years ago, we borrowed it down for a request for that at Thompson, didn't we?
Maybe, but, that's why I brought it up again.
That's right, no, but no, I agree, we do need it, um, but, you know, all depends on the cost too, you know...
Yeah, so subject to cost.
Might be able to find a second house on somewhere.
Right, or they're not that much. Cynthia, you got the subject too?
Yeah, so, yeah, back to Thompson Avenue, because the students recorded data on Thompson Avenue, so that was a speed reader board, so did we just borrow that, or what did we do last time?
That was the R C M P, right?
And so you're saying, I mean, we want to have our own in town? Okay, and I just want to comment about Plumen Way, because, you know, that, in, when I responded in my email, and I said, you know, that is a, you know, it is a main artery in town, whatever we want to look at it, and the natural inclination is to accelerate, right? You're going up a hill, so, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's the nature of the, of the topography too, and I, I can see that people, you know, speed, they don't, I, I don't think it's not, it's always the intention. It's forty, forty whatever kilometers an hour.
Yeah.
Um, which is reasonable in my mind, if people do forty, so, um, what will we do? Say you get that reader board, and you've got the data, and then you just want more police cars on that area?
Well, I think the, the data would, would do two things, number one, it might show the residents that people are not speeding.
Right.
And number two, if they are speeding, it would say to the, say to whomever the regulatory agency is, this is what's happening on this street, can we please get some attention to it? And, and as far as going up the hill, not everyone in Roseland drives a car like mine, where I have to start at Columbia and race like hell to make it to the top.
No, 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 and nor you shouldn't be, because of the school zone, particularly.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, but you know, but anyway, I think for now...
Anyway, that's fine, I'm, I'm a little bit reluctant about buying something like that, but, um, only because when we had the whole Thompson Avenue issue, we never got to buy one, however...
But it'll work there.
I'll stay open minded.
Okay, on that motion, all in favor? Opposed, the motion's carried, and...
I'd just like to make another comment about Plumen.
Yeah.
Um, just...
Oh, sorry.
Has everybody made consideration to make Sixth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, no exit, no access onto Washington? Because those are blind, those are blind hills going onto Washington, especially Sixth. You know, if we could stop, because I know I've driven up Sixth and Fifth, and you get to the top, and you can't see anything coming up until you crest that hill, until you pop out in front of somebody. So if we, you know, I think it'd be, you know, just local residents could go up to their, but, you know, there shouldn't be any access onto Washington.
One way down.
You can go down, but not going up.
We, I think, I think that there is, staff's done some research on some other options there, and I think perhaps that'll come to council at a later date, but I don't know if we want to beat that up for the moment. Counselor?
Um, I seem, chances are, I was one of the ones who voted against the board last time, and I think you remember that, that seven thousand dollars was the number that was presented last time, but, I mean, time changes that anyway. And this makes, I think this is probably the fourth or fifth time that we've talked about this, so this is telling me, okay, you know, something we should consider if, I think last time we considered it, it was maybe only a second versus second time, we felt we needed one, and, uh, so now, yeah, okay, maybe it looks like we do, we do things, um, but I wonder if maybe, I mean, this is subject to cost too, but maybe this is something we could, we could share with Warfield, or we could rent this, but I think share with might be more appealing to them, um, but I mean, that's...
Yeah, I think, yeah, certainly, I think that there, there could be a, a use in other communities, and we could maybe, uh, alleviate some of the cost by leasing it out, renting it out. But anyway, that'll be up for, for discussion when it comes back for the costing. Okay, so that's the end of my members' reports, so now your motion to recess to, oh, I'm sorry.
Your worship, I just would like to amend the motion for the in-camera meeting to be ninety-one K negotiations of the community charter and ninety-one B, which is security of property of the municipality.
Okay, I'll try my best to remember that, so what I'm going to do is call for a motion that the remainder of the meeting of July fourteenth be closed to public pursuant to section ninety-one K, negotiations of the community charter and?
D.
D.
Which is the security of the property of the municipality.
Okay, so on that, all in favor? Opposed, thank you, two-minute break, and we're in camera. Thank you.
Thank you.